Should be a short meeting today.
I think so. I do not think so.
I don't think so.
Thank you for attending tonight's meeting. Vanessa, please call the roll.
Here, Davis.
Here.
Vice Chair Milliken.
Here.
Treasurer D'Arati.
D'Arati, here.
Secretary Hatcher.
Here.
Trustee Fleming.
Here.
Trustee Knight Morton.
Here.
Trustee Millschey.
Here.
Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda?
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Yes, that's got the organization chart in it, which I know is going to make Ruth happy.
For the annual exam?
On a regular basis.
Moving on to Tab A, Recommendation at the Border Trustees, Approve the Minutes of the October 29th, 2024 Monthly Meeting as Subminute. Do I hear a motion?
They're moved.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, moving on to Citizen Participation. WCC Education Association, Mr. Wooten.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I apologize for my rustic appearance. I've been teaching since about nine and I just got out of a three-hour forest ecology lab out back with my students, so it's just flan owned best it is. So, last week, when Ally met with you, we discussed concerns surrounding the elimination of Google Suite, as well as a range of developmental education. We're happy to report that we have made progress in both of those areas. So on Thursday, October 31st, the faculty received an email from Provost Blakey that WCC will not be transitioning away from the Google Drive and Google Workspace Suite. And we are incredibly thankful for the college's decision to continue to offer that to students and faculty and to access the Google Suite. In the future, we respectfully ask that faculty are consulted about major software changes prior to setting plans in motion without consultation with those most affected. This is part of the WCC Board's policies, and it tends to work smoother that way, and we've had sticking points in the past about trying to rectify those situations. In addition to the conversations regarding Google, the Dev, Ed, Faculty, and Math have met with Dr. Tucker and are working towards a plan to further support our developmental education students, which includes a Math Resource Center and additional resources. We are hopeful that we can come to an agreement with the administration on the best ways to support these students. Although the conversations we have had in the last few weeks have been encouraging, it is important to remember that we are a community college, and all the decisions we make at this college should reflect the needs of Washtenaw County community. The faculty are committed to making sure that all of our students are supported and that we are providing access to the larger community as a whole. And speaking of students in our community, last week we had an election with outcomes that shook the foundation and security of many, not all, but many of our students, as well as several faculty and staff. I can tell you personally, I had emails from students at 3:30 a.m., 4 o'clock, 5 a.m. from LGBTQ and minority students, from female students, from Muslim students, and this was all throughout the early morning hours and into that next school day. They were scared, they were uncertain, they were depressed and anxious, they did not know how to move forward. It is important that WCC be there for these students and make all relevant resources available. It is important that faculty and staff maintain a professional working environment and make the classroom a safe space for all of our students. And as new initiatives are implemented at the state and federal level, it is important that WCC closely monitor and maintain its identity as an academic institution of diversity, equity, inclusion, free speech, self-expression, kindness, and of course, safety. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any public comments? I see I have one here from Jeremy Haley. Would you like to come forward, please? Hi, how are you? As protocol, you have three minutes, and after which I would let you know that you can have a seat, okay? You can go ahead.
Thank you all for having me again, and I'd like to thank the trustee for his time and service. That won't be here with us for next session. The choice was made for, of, and by the people, and that's how it goes. I was at a recent U of M meeting, and the regent spoke of the atmosphere on U of M's campus. Similar to kind of what he said, the people on campus feel in fear of talking to anybody about how they feel or how they think about things. And when she spoke about that, it's called diversity of thought, being able to understand and know that there's many ways to look about things. And when you talk to somebody, and so getting emotional and irrational, which a lot of people do, they just fly off like that, they start calling names. You can't have a rational discussion about what's being done. Point taken. Go to the Ypsilanti City Council meeting. They started talking about the crime and what to do about it. As soon as people started talking, they started calling them racist and other bad names, they had to shut the whole meeting down. Nothing got done. Okay? I'm going to read you a text from my daughter. I got, starting a bunch of hate texts at 6:00 and 6:30 in the morning, when she found out that Trump won. "I don't want to hear from you about your beat, anti-trans, and misogynistic talking points and delusions. I know you don't care at all how I feel." That's absolutely not true. I took a human anatomy and physiology course, and that course, they basically taught you its structure and function, that there's different structures and functions to men and women. And society now is telling me, hey, men can slap on a dress, make up where their hair long, and they're a woman. I'm like, biologically, that's not true, that's not how I learned it, but people say, don't believe what you learn, believe what we tell you. I mean, it's a sad state that we have to live like this. My daughter thinks I hate her, and it goes back to, you guys want to push diversity, inclusion, equity? Go back to Dr. Martin Luther King when he said, judge me on my content and my character, not by the color of my skin. The diversity that's being pushed looks at everybody's skin color, race, sex, everything but their character. It's driving division in the country. Boeing just dropped their DEI program. Big companies are dropping it because it's not putting people in place who have the merit to do the job. They're just checking off boxes and putting them there and go, oh, we're good. I mean, you look at professional sports, they only hire people who are good at the sport, the merit for the job. But in the workplace, like, no, we can't do that. We can't hire people of merit and who are good at the job. We got to look at what they look like, all this other stuff that don't even matter.
Thank you, Mr. Haley.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Vanessa, were there any written communications received? Okay, moving on to Special Reports, Annual Student and Financial Aid Profile, Fall Student Profile by Provost Blakey.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So we're going to talk about the student and financial aid profiles, and so VP Jennings and I will be presenting this evening. So we're going to talk about the annual student profile for 2023-24, the financial aid profile for 2023-24, and then our fall 2024 student profile as well. So these enrollment profiles includes all data that's reported to the state. The fall enrollment is based on the official federal count date of October 15th. The enclosed infographic, which is in the report, in your reports, is also for easy reference to give you a compilation of the data. So for 2023-24, we had 21,168 students enrolled in credit classes, so that's an unduplicated headcount. The students enrolled in either Fall '23, Winter '24, and/or Summer '24. So that was an increase of 884 students, or 4% bigger than the prior year. We had 9,268 new students last year, and that was an increase of 8%, 681 students over the prior academic year. We look at, you can see just kind of a breakdown, this gives the last five years, and it shows you, the yellow at the bottom is the new students, and then the all students is listed at the top. You can see we had an increase in both all students and new students last year. We look at our gender breakdown, you can see for 2023-24, our males were comprised 52% of the students that were enrolled in credit classes. And you can see that females were 48%. This is for, on an annual basis, you'll see when we look at the fall, that females were more predominant, but in the summer, we have all our trade students, so they're predominantly male, so that kicks up our male proportion when we look at, on an annual basis. If we look at the minority composition of our students, minority student composition was 40%. That compares to 30% minority composition for the county. We had an increase from 39%, which is what we had in 2022-23. You can see Asian was 11%, African American 14%, Native American .3%, Hispanic 9%. We had increases in both Asian and Hispanic students over the last year. This shows a graphical presentation of the ethnicity data. If we look at the educational attainment of our students who are coming in, these are our new students coming in last year, 8% of the students who came in over the past last year were, 8% were college grads, they had already graduated from college, 11% were current high school students, 48, an additional 48% of the students had had prior college, they were transferring to us from four or two-year institutions prior to coming to Washtenaw. Our age distribution for 2023-24, our average age was 27.4, our median was 22. You can see that we had, if you look at the lime green, you can see that we certainly had a jump in our students that were 17 and younger, and our 18 to 20-year-olds over the last year. We look at our non-credit enrollments, we had over 8,000 non-credit enrollments last year over those three semesters, that was an increase of 44% from the prior year, so an increase over 2,400 more enrollments. 50% of the non-credit enrollments are made up of these four areas. The large jump that we had in non-credit was attributed to the construction technology enrollments in non-credit, but you see motorcycle safety, skill building, and culinary arts also made up a large proportion. Here graphically, you can see where the jump was in our non-credit enrollments. Now if we look at the motive classes, 46% of our classes in 2023-24 were offered face-to-face. The graph shows by division, the divisions are listed at the bottom, and you can see that ATP had the most in our face-to-face, which we'd expect with all the occupational equipment that they have access to, and then MSC had the lowest proportion of, that's just the overall enrollments, but 32%, 46%, I'm sorry, 32,000, 46% were face-to-face. We look at our online enrollments, this would include both DL and our virtual, 45% of the enrollments, 31,000, were made up, the enrollments in 2023-24. Again, you see the divisional breakdown, and you see that BCT has the highest number of online enrollments. This is our virtual, you can see before 2019-20, before COVID, we did not have the virtual classes, we had a big spike in the virtual classes. Those are now being tapered off as we're having more sections being brought back to campus, but 8% of the enrollments were virtual during the 2023-24 year. And our blended, which is a combination of online and some in-person components, you can see that our blended was 1% of all the enrollments for the last academic year. And if we look at how students are broken up, so again, when we're looking at students on an annual basis, if we look at students who took face-to-face classes only, that was 30% of the enrollments that we had last year, students who had a combination of face-to-face classes and some online classes was 25%, and students who took online classes only were 45% of the whole student body. So that's counting the students based on all the classes they had for the academic year, and they get counted in one of those buckets. We look at our annual college awards, we had 3,553 awards processed last year. 2093 were certificates, we were down slightly with our certificates, and we were up with associate degrees, we had 1,460 associate degrees. Remember, our degrees are posted four times throughout the year. They're posted in August at the end of, excuse me, in December at the end of fall, April at the end of winter, and then two postings during summer, like the first seven and a half, and then the end of August. We look at somewhere where some of these awards were issued, we had a big increase in mechatronics, the Police Academy also had a large increase last year, supply chain essentials had 114% increase, 22 to 47. Our Human Resource Management also had a large increase, cybersecurity, our associate degree in that also increased, our criminal justice, and MTA again was 54% of all of our certificates with over 1,100 MTA certificates issued last year. Again, the infographic sheet that you have in your booklet, the first two columns on both sides give annual facts or give facts for the annual 2023-24, and the right column on both sides gives updates for the fall semester. I'll now turn it over to VP Jennings for the financial aid profile.
Good evening, I'm sorry.
Good evening.
Good evening.
What's the matter?
What?
There was a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Ruth?
Should we ask questions now or later?
Would you like for them to wait until your presentation is finished, or?
Whatever's easier, because we'll do the financial aid profile, and then we'll go back to fall profile.
So, maybe now, this is good.
Okay, go ahead and you tend.
My question is about, oh, I'm sorry, my question is about the offering of in-person and online and virtual and so forth. The change in those numbers is a result of what we're offering in the catalog? In other words, are we offering more in-person classes than online, so students at some point don't have that much of a choice, or are we responding to what students want? Or is it a combination, or?
Well, we're having more students come back to campus, so we're offering more on-campus sections, but you can see the online enrollments are still staying up because there's enrollments in those classes, and as we get wait lists on those classes, we add sections. So the sections, we're building the schedule based to meet student needs.
Okay.
But we are having more students coming back to campus, which is why we have a lot more cars in the parking lots, and so, but that's based on student need, and we'll make the schedule to meet student need.
So you would add more in-person if there were wait lists for those as well?
Yes, absolutely, yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a couple of questions.
Okay, trustee D'Arati?
Two simple questions, or maybe not simple. One is, I noticed among the non-credit courses, culinary arts, because we don't have a culinary arts program anymore, and I'm wondering how we're offering a non-credit in culinary arts.
So we're offering?
We offer classes in food, in like Italian western cooking, Syrian cooking.
Like for fun, like for fun cooking classes.
It's not occupational.
Okay.
So that's what's on the non-credit side, is kind of fun cooking classes.
Okay, and non-credit, people pay tuition for those, right?
They pay fees, it's not tuition, it's fees. The courses, the cost of the class is generally based on the cost of the instructor.
And those are our faculty, or are those contracted instructors for those sorts of classes?
They're part-time instructors, they're generally not our full-time faculty teaching the classes.
So they're on our human resource employment role?
Yes, certainly, yes.
Gotcha. And then, just another question, I know I've asked this before, how does a blended class work, or what is blended?
So a blended class would be, they're using the materials that have been developed for an online, but then they are meeting on campus, so it might be where a student maybe is not comfortable taking a full online class, so they'll say, I'm going to use online materials, but instead of meeting three hours a week, we're going to meet an hour and a half per week in person, and the other hour and a half is going to be online, and so the student gets the both in-person component and online component. Sometimes the blended classes might have the lecture, kind of lecture theory part is done online, but they'll have a lab component, and so they'll come in for the lab that's maybe not been able to do that online.
So that is offered, does the faculty member decide, we're going to do a blended, I'm going to do a blended class, and then people sign up for it as a blended class?
So that would be, the deans would be working to figure out what blended sections we're going to be offering, yes.
But students know that ahead of time, that it's blended?
Yes, it's on the schedule, it would indicate, is this an online section, is it an in-person section, or is it a blended section?
Gotcha, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Chief Millschey?
So a question in regards to, so along the same lines, blended, online, where are we trending with the benchmark with other institutions our size? Are we offering more, less? Where are we? And also, the question is, what does the future look like for online education? Obviously, it feels like it's changing, every year this changes a little bit, so what are we looking at moving forward, or how are you projecting as you move forward?
So certainly, again, we're scheduling to meet student need, and we have students coming back to campus, you know, a lot of them did not come back from COVID, and I've heard from some, from some schools that they are, they're struggling to get their on-campus classes back. We have some, some of our high school partners that are going to switch to us because we have on-campus classes, and they're not finding that at some of the other institutions, so I think we've done a better job of bringing the campus back. But we still have the need for online, there's still students that want to take online or not able to come to campus, I think it's an access issue of providing access for people that are perhaps working or having daycare, kind of family issues and aren't able to come to campus, so I don't see online going away. Again, we're continuing to develop the online classes that we have and expanding the programs that we have online, so that's certainly, again, in terms of meeting student needs, I think we'll continue, but we also are looking at, you know, making sure that we're offering the on-campus classes that we need as well. You're welcome.
Anyone else? Okay, go ahead. It's all yours.
All right, good evening again. So I will be bringing to you our 2023-24 financial aid profile. So, over the 2023-24 year, students receive over $35 million in financial aid from various sources. That represents a 3% increase over our 22-23 school year, which is about $1 million more students received in financial aid. Of that, about 6,000 of our students, 6,064 students, receive that aid. You'll see on our graph here, the green represents the students who are receiving financial aid, and the yellow represents students who are not receiving financial aid. Again, we've been pretty consistent across the board, around 6,000 students a year, which represents about a third of our students receiving some form of financial aid. How students are using the financial aid, about $12.3 million are being used by students to pay for their tuition fees here at WCC. In addition, about $821,000 have been used to purchase books and supplies for their classes and coursework. How that money is being allocated, so about 82% of the financial aid that students receive comes from the federal government, about 10% from the state, 5% from external, external also includes a WCC Foundation scholarships as well, and 3% comes directly from WCC. That represents $29 million from the federal government, a little bit more than 3.5 million from the state, WCC, 851,000, and external scholarships again, including a large percentage of that is WCC Foundation scholarships, about $1.8 million. How that's distributed to the students, about $14 million, about 47% is in grants money that the student does not have to pay back to either the federal government, state government, about $2.6 million in scholarships, again, money that the student does not have to pay back. Work-study, 184, almost $184,000, again, funding that the students do not have to pay back. We are seeing students receiving less loans, last year at this time, about $14.5 million in loans were provided to students. This year, that number has been reduced to about $13.7 million, so students are still utilizing loans, but they're utilizing less, so there's a less burden on the students for using loans again that they have to pay back. As we look at the money that WCC has provided for students, 466 students receive about $851,000 in scholarships from WCC. That includes our Presidential scholarships, our Farcasini scholarships, our Excellence scholarships to students, our high school students, also divisional scholarships that we provide to continuing students as well. We also have other funds that are not administered by WCC's Financial Aid Office. One is our Emeritus Scholarship, so about a half a million dollars was provided for students who are taking college credit courses and non-credit courses at WCC. You'll see here about $300,000 were used for non-credit courses, and about $200,000 for credit courses. We also provide scholarships for students who either work in district, own property in district, about 124,000, and with our Partner High Schools, which represents many of our local high schools, about $18,000 in support for those students as well. Talk a little bit about the Foundation Scholarships, so over the last four years, our WCC Foundation has averaged about $1.36 million to students. Last year, they gave about $1.3 or $1.4 million to about 1,000, a little over 1,000 students. That represents a 1.6 increase, so again, students are utilizing our WCC scholarships, they use that for tuition, books, and other educational expenses as well. One of our largest, our largest state programs is our Michigan Reconnect. It began in 2021, and as you can see here, we had about 214 students. This past school year, we had over 1,000 students receiving funding from the Michigan Reconnect for about $1.6 million from the state of Michigan, it is our number one state program. And I am excited to talk about how we are assisting students through our childcare scholarships. Last year, we assisted 56 students, which represented about 90, well, not about, but represented 92 children that were allowed to, their parents were allowed to go to school, go to clinicals, we were able to support those students and their children, about $200,000, and again, it was a support of the board, ensuring that we had scholarship funding for students for childcare. And how financial aid has been used to support students in their retention and completion here, so last academic year, we had about 3,500, 3,553 students, or sorry, certificates and degrees were awarded to students. Of that, there was actually 2,675 unique graduates. 60% of the students who graduated with a degree or certificate from WCC received some form of financial support from either the federal government, from the state government, from WCC, or the Foundation external scholarships. As you can see, the largest, the largest number represents our PALE for 1,100 students. Our Presidential scholarships represented 62 students, Excellence Scholarships- Our presidential scholarships represented 62 students, excellent scholarships, 47 students. And you'll see that we are supporting students in multiple ways using financial aid. And again, all the funds that you see here are funding that the students do not have to pay back. It's used, it's used to pay for school and educate, other educational resources. Two updates I wanted to talk about is the Michigan Reconnect. So temporarily, the Michigan Reconnect age has been reduced from 25 to 21. That expansion will end on December 31st, 2024. If students do not have their applications into the state by that time, they will lose out on the opportunity to be included in this expansion. Once the students have done that part, they have until summer of 2025 to actually utilize the scholarship. So if they apply for the scholarship but don't use it by summer of 2025, they will actually lose it. So we're spending a lot of time to make sure students who are eligible for the funding utilize their funding and enroll at WCC. And finally, you've heard, I'm sure, about the Community College Guarantee. It was really rebranded. It was formerly known as the Michigan Achievement Scholarship. So it's not two different scholarships, it's just we've rebranded the Community College Guarantee. It began to allow students in the class of 2024, covers in district. Prior to the change, it only paid a certain percentage of the students' in-district tuition. Students who are receiving Pell also could receive an additional $1,000 to be used towards educational expenses. Last year, we had 244 students utilize the Michigan Achievement. Again, it's now called a Community College Guarantee, but it's the same scholarship. Part of the reason that the, the number is 244, you probably imagine it may be, should be more than that, but it's really related to the eligibility. Students have to be full-time, and as you know, only about 25% of our students are full-time. So this represents a significant number of our high school students who came to us. But again, it's only for students who are actually full-time enrolled here at WCC. If you look at our infographic, the financial aid infographic, the left side represents our 2023-24 information. And the right column represents our fall of 2024 information around financial aid. I do want to take this opportunity to thank Andrew Mangia and the financial aid staff for all the work they've done. If you don't know, financial aid has changed tremendously over the last few years. A lot more restrictions are being put on how students can use the funding. And a lot more work on our staff to get that, get the funding to the students. So want to, again, thank our financial aid area for the work that they do to support students here at WCC.
Trusty Daverty?
Can you get me a copy of that PowerPoint that you just presented? Doesn't have to be tonight.
Sure.
I just, I was trying to jot down questions as I was going along, but you moved too fast.
Okay.
So I want to sit down with it and write down some questions that I could pass on to you.
All right. Thank you so much.
Does anyone else need to have the copy of the slides?
Excuse me, ma'am chair. I think at this time, if one person asks for it, the whole board gets it.
That's fine.
Thank you.
Trusty Millschon?
So in regards to the WCC Foundation, they have the Student Emergency Fund, which is for students with things other than academics. Is that part of the figures that, that we have provided for the total of scholarships? So for example, the foundation is at 5%. Is that including the student emergency fund or is that a separate?
It's separate.
It's separate. And do you have any idea what that funding is from the foundation? As well as maybe are there other sources for student emergency? You know, we keep hearing stories of what's happening in the world and our students needing assistance outside of just their tuition and books.
So we, I have that information. Yes.
Could you just do me a favor? Would you repeat that question because I was looking for my PowerPoint?
Sure. So my question has to do with the student, the WCC Foundation. So outside of the 5%, so I wanted to find out somewhat of a breakdown on the 5% that it provides for scholarships for students, the total aid, 5%. The Student Emergency Fund, which the foundation has set up, is that included in that 5%? Or is that separate? And if it's separate, do we also have other funds available for student emergencies?
We do.
And I'd like to just know what that number is. What are we providing between the foundation and the college?
So I can say, so right now, the Student Emergency Fund, 27, almost $27,000 was used to support students. We also have received additional funding from the state through a grant that's also going to support this as well, which is about $200,000 over the next couple of years. The state has recognized that there's more support needed for students. So we applied for a grant and we got 202,000 and some change for students. We also support the students through our Student Resource Center. So that's bus, bus tokens and food, food from our food pantry, but also gift cards to Meyer and Walmart for, for actual food, non-perishable. We provide non-perishable items internally, but we provide the gift card for them to purchase produce and those kind of things as well.
It'd be great to find out the total figure between everything that we provide outside of the tuition and the books. Just, I'd like to understand better, I'd like to understand the need and how we're fulfilling that need.
Sure. And I will say this, as part of, you see, $35 million. With some of the state programs now requiring students to fill out a FAFSA, they are now able to access federal dollars that they had not before. So more students are actually being able to use our Pell. That's why you'll see, I talked about the million dollar more. A lot of that's related to the students actually getting Pell grants. So they're getting additional funding to support school. And what they do not use for tuition fees is refunded to the students so they can use to pay housing and transportation costs. So that, we, we are seeing the need being met through our own institution, but also for the federal government and the state as well.
Thank you.
Yes, I'd like your permission. Excuse me. Thank you very much. You don't have to sit down. I mean, just thank you for providing all those numbers. I just want to make sure that I understand your question. So would you mind if, when I talk to Alex, I mean, Trusty Millschon after, so I could write his question? And then I'll send the answer in our board memo?
Yes.
Because you're asking some specific numbers. And although he's trying his best and I would try my best, I'm not sure if I'm accurately answering it. Do you know?
Yeah, I'm happy, yeah.
So if you don't mind?
I, I guess what I'm, what I'd really like to know is how, how, beyond tuition and books, what else are we doing for our students?
Okay, wraparound services, is that?
Not, more financially of like helping the students who actually need the help. So the, the food pantry, the, you know, the gift cards for, to get gas, somebody who has a broken or a tire or something with their car. I just like to know that number of, what else are we providing for our students outside of the usual books and tuition for financial aid?
Okay, thank you.
Just so that, I, I think it's important for our community to realize that there's a lot that happens on this campus that we help towards, other than just providing education. But we're actually providing other things for our students so that they can stay in classes and be successful here. And I just would like to know, like, what is that dollar amount if we can get one at all?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you.
Trusty McNaborn?
I just wanted to interject. And I understand what you're saying. This is a situation that has been going on for years. When I say years, I'm, I'm going back at least 20, almost 30 years, that we've always had some sort of safety net for students. And it's all encompasses of what is going on with that student's life. When I was the manager for Washington Community College, I mean, excuse me, Washington County Employment and Training, that's one of the things that we did, that if they needed childcare, transportation, get their car fixed. If they needed food, shelter, clothing, tools, whatever they needed, they got. The school that I would send students here for to get training, they accepted everything for that student, what was being paid for by the county. I don't know what the county's doing now, I have to say that. But I know this school has always been doing that. So it's, I understand you want to see it in black and white. However, I want you to understand, this is something that has been, been done for, I know, for past 30 years that I've been on this board. Okay?
Anyone else? Trusty Daverty?
So I just want to clarify, it's my understanding, Pell grants are to the student and can be used for anything, not just tuition and books, but to support them living while they're going to school.
Educationally-related expenses, including housing.
Right. And transportation.
Yes.
But the, so the, the school does not see all of that Pell grant money. But my understanding is that we invest college resources in helping council students to apply for these grants.
Sure.
So we are investing in the student's ability to acquire those grants to help them have the financial capacity to succeed at our college. That's an investment we make as a college. It's not shown in these numbers, but it's shown in our staffing costs and all of our costs.
Absolutely.
That's an investment that we make that I don't want to forget about or to recognize that that's not necessarily in this. But it's an investment that we're making as a college in our students' ability to succeed financially in staying here. So am I wrong in that?
No, you're absolutely correct. Absolutely correct.
Okay.
I do have a question if no one else. Trusty Hatcher?
Maybe this isn't a question to ask in front of, of us, but what are we missing? In other words, what, what do students come to you for that you can't give them? In other words, what do we, what's the next step in terms of what we need to give, help students with? Are we covering all the bases? Are there bases that need to be covered? Are there new bases coming up that we'll be surprised by? What do you need?
Continued board support.
Okey-dokey.
Yep. So right now, I can't think of anything because we are meeting the needs today.
Sure.
But I can't tell you that we will not be asking for the board's support for something in the future. So continued board support is what I would say from, from my standpoint.
Well, keep, keep mining those issues and, and please bring them to us.
I just a basic question regarding, okay, there was a point in your presentation where you listed a number of expenses that have decreased in relations to others that have increased in terms of distribution for funds to students. And so it looked like the books, the cost of books and such was like, what, 150-some thousand? I mean, not 100, 800 and some thousand dollars, I guess collectively.
Collectively.
Now with our OERs, is that figure based on the number of materials that have, learning lesson materials that have switched over to OERs where this book's expenses have gone down? Or is that totally separate or, you know, help me to understand that.
So the, the amount that you see there, 851,000
Yeah.
represents anything from welding supplies, nursing scrubs. So our OERs are not covered, they're free for students.
Okay, so it's not part of that?
Not part of that. Actually, it's helping to reduce the cost for students to attend WCC. So these are, you know, again, there are, in many cases, our auto body, I mean, they're buying tools and those things. So those things are supplies. So students are able to purchase those things through our bookstore as well.
I agree.
And this represents only the students who are using financial aid to pay for their supplies and books. So there's a lot more students who are paying for, but our numbers today represent just the financial aid, students receiving financial aid.
Great. Okay, thank you. Trusty Daverty?
One more. I wanted to go back to the OERs, which is another thing that we've invested in as a college. And faculty members have invested time and energy, did design classes that can be done basically with free textbooks. It would be interesting to get the amount of money each year saved by students using OERs, or if we can estimate. I don't know if there's any way to estimate what an average economics class would take if it had the textbooks, commercial textbooks, or if it's done with OERs.
Haven't we done that already?
But that's another area that I think it's important to recognize that we as a college are investing in making education less expensive. So the financial aid dollars don't show everything that is being done to assist students financially. One, one of the things that we've done is these OER programs. And hopefully, we're continuing to find more classes that we can offer these OERs, these textbooks that are basically free. You don't have to go buy because they're available without copyright.
Would you like that number?
I think it would be good.
I believe we, yeah.
It's the kind of number that I'd like to be able to tell, especially if we're going to lobby at the legislative summit in February with, with congresspeople. I'd like to be able to tell them, in addition to the federal money that we're asking you to continue giving to our students, to students all over the country, these Pell grants, I want you to see what we're doing as a college. We've created these classes that saving X amount of dollars in textbook costs. We're investing in whatever to assist students in getting loans and getting whatever financial aid. But those are numbers that some of our congresspeople, I would think, would be persuaded by saying, we're not just asking for their dollars, we're investing our own dollars to, to financially support our students. So it's not like, yeah, we're asking you for dollars, but we're also investing.
Excellent. Good idea.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Oh, excuse me. Trusty Hatcher?
Dave, be careful about that because if I were a legislator, I might say, well, if you're saving $600,000 a year on books, I can reduce the Pell by that amount because you don't need it. So be careful what you ask for.
Anyone else? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We're moving on.
By the way, oh, 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 oh.
Oh, there's more?
The last summary on the OERs was 10 million. It was over 10 million.
Is that an annual or is that?
No, that was cumulative, but it was over 10 million. But that, that number gets updated each year, but it's over 10 million now since we started with OERs. So, sorry, you're not done with me yet. So now we're going to look at Fall '24. The official count date was October 15th, which you remember is a federally defined count date. Well, we had 11,220 students enrolled. That was 409 students above Fall '23, so almost a 4% increase. We had over 90,000 credits that those students were enrolled in. We had an increase of almost 2,400 credits or 2.7% increase over Fall '23. Our full-time students remained level at 26%. Again, as VB Jennings noticed that that, you know, that most of our students are going part-time. The average credit load of our degree-seeking students decreased or increased slightly from 8.8 to 8.9 credits. The average credit load of our non-degree-seeking decreased from 6.5 to 6.2 credits for the semester. If we look at our degree-seeking students, 70% of our students are degree-seeking. 58% of our students have indicated that they intend to transfer. I think this number is incredibly deceiving. It's deceiving because all of our middle, college, and dual-enrolled students cannot declare as degree-seeking. And we know for our middle college students, they have to complete a degree before they leave. So, but the state and the federal government requires us not to report dual-enrolled high school students or middle college students as degree-seeking, so they are not included in that bucket. Our distribution by age, the average age for the Fall '24 semester is 25.4. 66, two-thirds of our students are below the age of 25. Look at the gender and minority composition. So you remember how we were predominantly male for the annual, but for the Fall semester, So you remember how we were predominantly male for the annual, but for the fall semester, we're predominantly female. So fifty-three percent of our students are female, and that compares to the forty-eight percent annually. Our minority composition for the fall semester is at thirty-nine point seven. Um, we're up slightly from Fall '23, where, where we were at twenty, thirty-eight point three. Again, we had an increase in Asian students and Hispanic students for the fall semester.
Hatcher? trustee McKnight-Morton?
I would like to know, if you go back to that slide again. I like the, the percentages and the numbers here of the minority composition, but how is it that we're able to, to, I've said this so many years, one year after the other, how is it that we can get more Hispanics, more Asians? I'm just, all the other, others, how can we increase this, this number? How can we, what is it that needs to be done? Do we have to go out and beat bushes and leaves to find these people to, to, to come? To, to show to them that they need to come to WCC? What is it? I'm not sure.
So, so for all the categories, except Asian, we're enrolling a higher percentage of those ethnic categories than what's in the population of the county. So we continue to do that. So for, for all of these groups except for Asian, we enroll a higher proportion of those ethnic groups than what is found in our, in our county population.
American Indian is not in here. I mean, and this is another group of people. I'm, I'm sorry, I don't mean to go off trail here, but I'm really concerned. And this has been going on since I've been here.
And, and so I don't, just so I don't, these are the top, the top groups.
Right.
But in the, in the book, there's, Native American is listed as one of the categories.
What, zero percent?
Uh, no, it's a little bit of percent, but it's not zero.
trustee DeVardie?
So looking at these, on this slide, these numbers, unknown is five percent. All the other categories add up to ninety-nine percent, Asian, African-American, Hispanic, white, two or more. So I'm assuming that that's ninety-nine percent of the minority composition of the minority. So it's ninety-nine percent of the thirty-nine point seven percent of our enrollment is a hard number.
We do the, the, when we look at the composition and we look at the percentages, it's of the known. So the five percent that are unknown are not calculated into those numbers.
So that, if, who, who knows what they are, that could totally change.
Correct. So we can't, we can't force people to answer that question.
But that's also, that five percent is five percent of our total enrollment?
Yes, five hundred and eighty-one students.
It's as opposed to five percent of the thirty-nine point seven.
Correct.
So somehow.
That is not five percent of the thirty-nine point seven.
On this chart, I'd like to like pull it out from under that, just to make it understandable that it's not like five percent of that minority composition is unknown. I saw, do you see what I'm saying?
Yes.
Just to pull it out from that spot.
I will, I will pull it out.
Okay.
I will pull it off the slide.
I mean, it's important, I guess it's important to know that, but it's.
It is important to know, so, but it is, it is the percentages of the known categories, but we will take that off for next year.
Thank you.
So here's a graphical presentation of the ethnic categories. Our dual-enrolled high school students increased from thirteen thirty-four to fourteen eighty-nine for the fall semester. Our top five feeder high schools for new students were Huron, Pioneer, Dexter, Howell, and Brighton this year. Um, and that feeder calculation was all students, no matter what year they graduated, so they could have graduated in eighty-five, and we're still including them in these new student numbers. Our dual enrollment partners, you can see and you heard from Dean Covert last, last month, the middle college, that, the middle college students that we have enrolled are five hundred and twenty-one, so thirty-five percent of all of our dual-enrolled students are middle college. That's not just WTMC. You can see WTMC had four hundred and eight students enrolled for this fall semester, followed by Dexter, Howell, these are all dual-enrolled students. Dexter is a combination of dual-enrolled and middle college. We also have middle college students at Ypsilanti and Heartland are also middle col, are going to be some middle college students as well. Um, you can see the WTMC proportion of our dual-enrolled students dropped from thirty-two percent to twenty-seven percent for this fall semester, based on the question that we had from Alex last year. This is the breakdown of how the students, the dual-enrolled students are enrolling. So thirty-five percent are taking face-to-face classes only, forty-six percent are taking online only, and nineteen percent are taking a combination of face-to-face and online.
I do have a question real quick. So, the two slides back, um, the one back. So the top feeder high schools for new students, and these are high schools that partner with us, with the senior high schools?
These are just, these are all new, no. Nope. These are just the top five feeder high schools for all new students. So any new student that came to Washtenaw for the fall semester, these were the top five feeder high schools.
So do we have any?
For just new students. This is not the dual-enrolled, that, that's.
Right, that's what I wanted to make sure.
Right, this all new students.
Okay, so we don't have any students that come to us from Skyline?
Oh, yes, we have Skyline students.
They're not the top five?
They're not the top five.
All right, you had to say it four times for me to hear it, okay?
Correct, sorry. Yeah, we got a whole list like this.
Oh, okay.
So these were just the top five.
Okay, great, thank you.
You're welcome. Um, so you see Dexter has grown over the last year, Howell is also a middle college partner. And so again, these are dual-enrolled partners.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. If we look at the face-to-face enrollment, so again, just for the fall semester, forty-eight percent of the enrollments for this semester are at forty-eight percent. You can see the, the division breakdown of those. You can see that, um, the enrollments by division. Our distance learning enrollments, our DL enrollments for the fall semester is at forty-one percent, a little over eleven thousand. Our virtual learning enrollments, again, that's online but with specific days and times, are seven percent of our enrollments. And again, as we started bringing more classes on back to, on face-to-face on campus, our virtual enrollments have been declining. And then our blended, which again is a combination of online and face-to-face, is four percent of the enrollments for this fall semester. If we look at our fall course modes, I'm going to kind of see what the breakdown of these students looks like. So the students who are face-to-face only, that's again thirty-five, almost thirty-nine-hundred students. Forty-nine percent of those students are female, forty-four percent are age twenty below, and sixty percent are in district. For the students who are taking a combination of some, some face-to-face and some DL, that's twenty-four percent of our students. Again, those were fifty-five percent of those students are female. And then for our DL and for our students who are taking online only, which would include both online and virtual, that's forty-one percent of the student body for this fall semester, fifty-six percent of those students are female. I'd like to thank all the faculty and staff for supporting our enrollment initiatives. We could not be supportive and be as successful as we are with gaining enrollments without the, the, the help of everyone across campus. Uh, so special thanks to Pete Leskovich and his enrollment team, Kathy Curry and the data team, Pat Bracco and Cammy Davis, the Illusian team, for again, producing all of these reports through the Argo system, Shane Redman and our IR team, and Laura Turner and Mitch Resler for the infographics and production of these books. And just a reminder that our winter '25 semester begins on January thirteenth.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions or comments? trustee Milstein?
So, a couple questions, um, with regards to, so in one of these books that I read, I don't remember which one exactly it was, there was a comment about a decline of fifteen percent or more in some of our programs. I think it had criminal justice, dental assistant, medical assistant potentially, and there's a couple other ones in there.
Those were not program, but those were course enrollments. Those were like discipline enrollments.
Got it, okay. So what are we doing to make sure that those numbers are, are there marketing efforts that are being put in place so that those enrollments start climbing again?
Yeah, sometimes those enrollments are, you know, they, they might have had a big bump last year and then they tapered off again. But yes, those, those numbers are being looked at all the time, all the time.
Um, the one that surprised me was the criminal justice, that that, with, it looks like our police academy is, enrollment is up, but criminal justice is down. Is, are we, is there some cannibalization that's happening between the two potentially?
No, those are, that's a separate, um, so the criminal justice program would be students who might be wanting to go into the police academy, but those, those programs are separate. Um, the police academy being students, being students who are either being, and a lot of the police academy enrollments are those that are being, they're being supported through police departments, and that's primarily filling up a lot of the police academy because they're being hired by departments and sponsored through those departments to come to the police academy, where our criminal justice students are going through. Um, a lot of our criminal justice students are in three-plus-one programs because we have a three-plus-one program with Eastern, so they're in that three-plus-one program and then transferring to Eastern for their bachelor's degree.
trustee Milstein, president Balaca would like to interject.
I just wanted to respond to your comment about criminal justice. Actually, I looked into that, not because of our program, but just the area in particular. And that seems to be a trend that is going on in that whole, you know, a national trend that that area is going down in enrollment. I just, I found that very interesting.
Yeah, as did I. I was surprised by that figure.
It's also just in terms of people applying for criminal justice jobs and police department jobs, there's a huge decline.
Uh huh, yeah, got it. So this is really good information. I'm assuming that our marketing department is utilizing and leveraging this information in order to, um, to market programs to various demographics that we've identified?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Because it, it's good stuff, and I'm, I'm assuming Dr. Redman is preparing a lot of this, and we, during our last conversation, it sounded like he was working with our marketing department. So I found this information super, uh, super helpful in trying to figure out our demographics here at the college. One more question, um, and I think I actually answered that one already. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for the support.
Thank you.
It was very good.
It was very good.
Okay, we're going to move on to tab B, the monthly reports, first being a personnel recommendation. The recommendation is that the Board of Trustees approve the personnel recommendations as submitted. Do I hear a motion? Any discussion? trustee Hatcher?
Um, thank you for the org charts, and because of that I have no questions.
That looks really good. Anyone else? No? Moving on to remarks by the members of the Board of Trustees, if anyone would like to add remarks.
Well, we should approve this first. The personnel recommendation.
That would be great.
I move we approve the.
Thank you.
Personal recommendations as submitted.
Fair motion, you?
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And we can move forward to tab, I'm sorry, to remarks, Board of Trustees. Any remarks? trustee Milstein?
Um, I don't know where to start with this. The last week has been interesting. I'm not usually one that doesn't have a whole lot to say, but the results of the national election that occurred a week ago, uh, was very, for me, very disappointing. I mimic, as our faculty representative mentioned, that I am scared, as I know many of our students are scared. Being a minority, a gay man, it's a scary time for our country. And so I'm at a loss for words. Um, I don't know what to say. People keep looking to me to try to offer some encouragement, but it's definitely a scary time, and I hope that we as a Board of Trustees and the college will support our students, our faculty, and our, our community during this time that is very uncertain at this point. So scary, and I really don't know what more to say about that. With regards to the trustee election, um, I want to thank everybody who supported me during the campaign, and I especially want to thank everybody who reached out afterwards to give me your words of encouragement, and so I appreciate it. This is not my goodbye. You'll get that full fifteen-minute speech or more at our next meeting, so be prepared. It might be a later evening. But I do want to thank the community for all that they've done and for all the trustees. It's been a pleasure to work here with all of you, and I plan to continue working until my term is up at the end of the year, but my goodbyes will be at the next meeting, so stay tuned. Thank you.
Thank you.
trustee Hatcher?
Um, I too am frightened about last week, um, and I've advised everybody I know to get a passport. I don't know quite what that's for, but it's all I can think of, is a Band-Aid. And I'm wondering, I'm sure people are thinking about it, perhaps the political science department or the history department, the counseling department, is it too soon to offer safe places to talk about it? It may be too soon, it may be too volatile, you know, it may be dangerous. I'm not trying to push it, it's just that I think there are a lot of frightened people and don't, they don't know how to talk about it. And I don't know if we have counselors or faculty who are good at that. I don't know. And whether it's risky now, maybe in January or sometime, but a safe place is what I heard would be an interesting thing to call it, a safe place. And learning how to talk about such things without, and people used to ask me what I taught at Washtenaw, and I used to say, I taught students how to be students, and I taught them how to disagree with each other without pulling out a gun. So maybe that's what we need to think about, so.
trustee Milliken?
I was out of town last week, but Tim Scoubick, I understand, was on campus speaking to the Economic Club, talking about the results of the election. Would anybody care to share some veins of thinking that Tim Scoubick had to share with the Economic Club?
I wasn't there. I was at work.
He was here virtually, and when, the high point for me was, he was asked whether the election reflected, um, gender bias and racism. He said yes, and that was the end. He didn't elaborate, he just said yes.
Sorry to miss that, but thank you.
trustee McKnight-Morton?
I would just like to say thank you to all of the community that supported me in my reelection, and I really appreciated it. It was hard work, and, but I never take elections lightly, and I'm just blessed and feel grateful that my community still supports me for another term. Thank you, everyone.
trustee Hatcher?
Sorry, I have one more thing. It has to do with the emeritus list. It's a long list, and I'm just, I, I know we have in the past had done this, but we had an emeritus luncheon and invited emeritus, um, everybody to come, and maybe it's time with all these people while they're still alive.
I'd like to say also what trustee Hatcher just said. I totaled up the years, it comes to five hundred and nineteen years of these people who are retiring, and I think that's, that's a huge amount of knowledge and experience. But, um, God bless them, and, you know, and I think that's a great idea because we used to do that. Thank you, Ruth.
Anyone else? Okay, president Balaca?
Well, that emeritus list is not in your packet tonight because it, there were some changes that needed to be made, so we will bring it back next, at the next meeting, and hopefully you'll be able to. And hopefully you'll be able to approve it at that night. So and I that's why we have a new agenda. I wanted to make sure that you knew that. The agenda you voted on, we had to pull that today. We received some additional, we received some information that the list was incomplete. So I just want you to know. I know you did because we just figured it out today that we caught something. And so I apologize for that. But I thought I'd tell you that now. So anyway, thank you. By the way, you gave a lot of good suggestions tonight, the board. I want to thank you for that. Good questions. And, you know, definitely, we will look into it. As I told, told you before, we do meet every day after every board meeting and review board comments and action that we, you know, we we should take and where we should move for these things. So I thank you and want you to be assured that we do hear you. So thank you. Actually, I even have a parking lot sketch of where the snow is not going to be plowed. I don't think we're going to show that tonight, I'm not sure, but
Assuming that there's snow.
I just want you to know that we did follow up on that, even that. So but yesterday was Veterans Day, and it was a wonderful event. I'd like to thank trustee Hatcher for being there with us yesterday and trustee, what is your name anyway?
Milliken.
Trustee Milliken, yeah.
Trustee Milliken for being there yesterday. Thank you so much. It was a great event. Thank you, Kathy Curry, for your leadership in providing the event. It was really well done. Thank you. I also, I'm happy to announce that our state journalists, you'll be happy to hear this, from the Washtenaw Voice, student newspaper, were again winners for their outstanding work. The team recently attended the Fall National College Media Convention in New Orleans, and we received three awards. The Voice team together earned fourth place in Best of Show for News Websites. The Voice team also earned sixth place in the Newspaper News Magazine category. And contributing writer Tahura Badar, and I think she was our student in our my president's luncheon, was awarded an honorable mention in the Category Story of the Year. So congratulations to these students. The last week, we also hosted the Women of Color Michigan ACE, the State Luncheon for the Women of Color Collaborative. And our Women's Network here at the college put on the event. It was outstanding. Thank you, trustee. What is with me tonight with these McKnight Morton? Thank you so much for attending that event. It was really, we really appreciated that. And also, we had a great speaker, Kim Trent, who is from the Department of Deputy Director of Prosperity at the Michigan Department of Labor and Economic Opportunity. And she also spoke about the election and also shared where Leo is going in terms of economic prosperity. The Economic Club, again, Ted Scubic, thank you so much for attending. He was outstanding. Thank you, trustee Hatcher, as well as McKnight Morton. Thank you so much for being there. It was a great event. And the Foundation Scholarship Luncheon is December. You were there too. I'm sorry.
No, I wasn't at the Economic Club.
I'm not listening to anyone. Okay, just a reminder that the Foundation Scholarship Luncheon, it's really an important one, it's a great one, is December 4. And that's where we bring all of our scholarship awardees to lunch and recognize our donors. So I hope you'll be able to make it. And I'm not going to say anything about you, Alex, at this point. So thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, so let's move on to new business for discussion. Tab D is the Broadcom VMware Solution Recommendation. Provost Blakey?
Good evening. We're going to talk about the Broadcom VMware recommendation. So VMware allows the college to set up virtual servers. We've relied on this virtual server environment for many years. Our data center, our current data center, which is on the third floor Student Center, has 12 physical servers. And those 12 physical servers host 245 virtual servers. And those are essential for our onsite systems, including Banner, our Argos Data Analytics System, which is what produces those profiles, our file shares for departments sharing files across campus, our PCI Compliance Systems for all of our finances, our Active Directory when people log in, and other core network functions. The benefits of using servers that are virtual is operational efficiency. We can, you know, update, we can share, you know, first day registration, when things get really busy, we might have to share some of those virtual servers and spread the the work around multiple servers so that the system stays up. Consolidation savings, enhanced security and uptime, and scalable growth. The Banner SaaS project, which is something that you approved in May, will reduce the number of virtual service servers that are needed on campus, but it will certainly will not eliminate the virtual service. We will continue to have virtual servers on campus even after we go to SaaS. And the SaaS project is also not something that was like that. So it's a two-year timeline. It's a huge project. We have an anticipated go-live date of the Banner SaaS project of October 9, 2026. So our VMware that we've been using for years was recently purchased by Broadcom. This has had a worldwide impact. Broadcom switched VMware to a subscription-based model. The new annual cost of the product will now be $166,858. Broadcom is the exclusive provider of VMware, so it's the sole provider of this technology. So some companies have had huge, AT&amp;T had a 3,000% increase. I expect my AT&amp;T bill will go up. The annual cost is based on the number of virtual servers. So again, we have 245 virtual servers that we currently have defined in our system. We expect that this annual cost to be lower in the future. So after we transition to Banner SaaS, we expect that there will be a reduction in the number of virtual servers that we'll have to have. And so we expect that this price will drop in the future. There's the recommendation that the Board of Trustees approve a contract with people-driven technology, which is a Broadcom, a Broad, Broadcom, sorry, authorized reseller. So Broadcom does not sell directly. You have to go through a reseller for the VM renewal for one year in an amount not to exceed $166,858. Is there any questions?
Trustee DeVarty?
So is this something we have not been paying for as an annual thing in the past?
It is something that we have been paying for, but it was well below $50,000, so it did not come to the board. So we have been paying for it, but we have not been paying this much for it.
Broadcom acquired this company and they're jacking the price up.
That is correct. It would be similar to like a company that says, oh, we're going to take all over the insulin and jack the price up because we're the only one making insulin. Yes, they bought the company and they're jacking the price up incredibly. And everyone who has VMware, which is a lot of companies, are getting their jacked up prices. It's not fair, I understand.
They think, well, yeah, I mean, it's not like you can rip out VMware. If you were to replace the VMware, it would be a multi-year project to replace VMware. And that would be even more costly. So they really kind of got us where it counts here. The price, it's about the price level of other enterprise software packages. So I'm actually kind of surprised they didn't jack it up before when it was just VMware. So the fact that they did keep it down for so long is kind of surprising to me. Broadcom is known as a really excellent company for backend communications and networking equipment. So I'm not concerned about Broadcom Broadcom's quality in terms of their other products. And I'm prepared to vote for this. But yeah, I recognize that it's kind of a raw deal that they jacked it up. But it is a good product.
Trustee McKnight Morton?
Is there any way to negotiate the price down? I'm just asking.
It's currently, it is currently under negotiations right now. We're working to get it down even more.
Yeah. I think the first initial price we had was well over 200,000. So there has been some reduction. I think it was like almost 220. So there has been some reduction, but we're still working to get it further reduced.
And that's based on the 245?
Yes.
Trustee DeVarty?
I just wanted to finish my thought.
Oh, go right ahead.
So if you're negotiating, is there any any way to negotiate other than once a year to, you know, instead of once a year, twice, three?
There was not, there was not any reduction to do a multi-year contract, which is why we brought only one year forward. So sometimes they'll say, oh, if you sign up for two years or three years, they'll reduce the annual price. And they would not reduce the price if we did a multi-year contract, which is why we decided on one year, because maybe in a year, we'll either have another company that's doing VMware, or we'll be able to perhaps have a few less virtual servers, and so the price will be able to be able to come down a little bit. It will not come down a lot because, again, we're not moving to SaaS until '26.
Trustee DeVarty?
This is not very good.
So when does the contract commence with for VMware through this people-driven technology?
When you approve it, which I assume hopefully will be at the December meeting. I'm not, we're not asking for a rapid approval.
So do we, in our past contract, is there anything that, can the contract just be terminated? Or can we run longer at the $50,000 price?
No, we cannot.
Okay. Those are my questions.
Trustee Millshane?
So this isn't specific for this item. And Provost Blakey, this may not be your question to answer, and maybe I'm not even asking a question at this point. I think we're seeing more and more over the past two years, we're seeing more and more of these services becoming a yearly fee, monthly fee, we're signing these long-term contracts. I think it would be good to be a little bit more proactive, I'm assuming from a budgeting standpoint, to figure out how these are transitioning. And just that we're on top of this, so it's never a surprise that we at least know when these contracts are coming due, that it's going to be a substantial increase, mostly just from a budgeting standpoint. But more importantly, if there is a competitor out there that's providing a equal, better product, maybe maybe a transition to that product might be something for us to consider. So I don't think I have much of a question as I'm talking around this.
Right now, that's not available. Perhaps in a year, maybe something would
And I'm not just talking about this, but
But other things.
Other things that we're looking at. I think it's important that we start paying attention as as we're seeing this happen more and more. It seems like almost every other meeting, we have another service that we're negotiating a price on that's a was a non-SaaS and now is a SaaS service. So thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you. Welcome. Moving on to tab E, the appointment of the 2025 Board Negotiation Team for the WCCEA Master Contractual Agreement.
Good evening. You have tab E before you. As many of you know, our existing faculty contract was originally negotiated in August of '22. It expires in August of '25. We are beginning the process of gearing up for the negotiation. The first step in that process is the appointment of our negotiating committee. That's what we've presented to you tonight in this resolution. The contract does not expire until August, the 22nd of '25. And we expect, hopefully, to be able to negotiate it well in advance of the expiration date. So the first step is to appoint this group as our bargaining committee, and that is the matter before you this evening. Is there any questions?
Trustee Millshane?
There an urgency? Do we need to approve this this evening, or is December a fine timeline?
Oh, December's just fine.
Okay.
Well, yes, we've begun a couple of other aspects of this, but it they're not contingent on this committee being appointed, gathering data, et cetera. That process will go on, but we don't need this approved. Thank you for asking.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay, we're moving on to tab F, Siemens Service Contract, excuse me, Siemens Service Agreement Renewal, AVP Whipstock.
Good evening. Presenting to you is the Service Agreement Renewal for the Siemens system, which is our building automation system that controls all the HVAC ventilation campus-wide. Also, they provide a onsite technician that comes out and and looks at the system, makes sure everything's working. They provide 24-hour, 365-day emergency response. They also provide off-site monitoring when the campuses close, like in the midnight time. So they actually monitor our systems to make sure if there's any emergencies, they would contact us. Part of this contract, too, is that they provide what we started about four years ago is is recommissioning all of our HVAC units. So what that means is they go through in every building, every HVAC unit, and test all the sensors, actuators, valves, to make sure that all of our HVAC equipment is up to the design parameters. This has proven good for our system. We started about four years ago. When we started it, and well, we actually looked at it last year. And since we've been doing it, we've actually reduced our hot and cold calls by 70% by doing this recommissioning. This year, we normally present this as a three-year contract, but this year, we're presenting it as a six-month contract for two reasons. One, to try to get it over to the fiscal year from July to June. And also, we're implementing AIMS, which is a new software system. Now, we're trying to trying to take the Siemens system and put it into the, you know, figure out what modules we need. Siemens could, if they see a problem, say if a sensor is bad and they pick it up, they could actually send a work order over on our AIMS system for a tech to respond to it. So we're figuring out how we can do that. Like I said, this is for a six-month contract for $109,000. The Siemens system is a proprietary system, so it wasn't bid out. It's a single source to Siemens.
Any questions, discussion? Trustee Milliken?
This provides for six recommissioning units per year. How many HVAC units do we have? We, well, this is six because it's only a half a year contract. I should have made that clear. But during the three month, our three-year period, we end up doing all of our HVAC units campus-wide. So every three years, we go through each and every HVAC unit. Last year, we just started over again. So I don't have that offhand, but it's usually about 12 units per year per contract that we do. Well, preventive maintenance is a good thing, so it's a good path that you're on. Yeah, and generally, when they they find stuff, we end up going back and fixing it. It's just going, looking for the problems to resolve it before it becomes an actual big problem.
Thank you.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to
My goodness.
Was that you? Yeah, trustee McKnight Morton?
Are we to vote on this tonight? I mean, I says discuss, but we can wait until December?
That, yeah, we brought it so we can get it to where we write a PO in January, because that's when the contract is up. So, yeah, we don't need to rush.
Okay, thank you.
I have a quick question.
Trustee DeVarty?
So I know we've just put in for some state support potentially for a reconfiguration of the student building. And I'm, and I'm
And I'm, and I know we need to redo the HVAC system and that. Does that, and the HVAC, current HVAC system is part of the current contract that goes through all the recommissioning. Will they be, Siemens be involved in any aspect of the new system if and when we put that in?
Yeah, I should make that clear. The Student Center is the only system that isn't on the system. It's still on an old Honeywell system. So once we do the renovation of the Student Center, we would put it on the Siemens system. So yes, I said campus-wide. I should have made it clear that the Student Center was not part of it. It's an old Honeywell system.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you very much. Trustee Belaka?
No, I think he's next. I think he has another one.
Yeah, why are you leaving? Student Center Restroom Renovation, AVP Whipstock, Tab G.
All right. I know a few of you have been waiting for this. This is the Student Center Restroom Renovation. As you know, the Student Center building is over 40 years old. Most of the restrooms have had little updates. Some have had none. This project would renovate all 17 restrooms throughout the building, which we would be replacing wall tiles, floor tiles, new restroom stall partitions, new toilet fixtures, vanities, dispensers, update the lighting, painting and patching of the ceilings and walls. Any ADA compliant issues will be addressed at the same time when we renovate those bathrooms. This renovation project will most likely take a year because we can only take down a few bathrooms at a time. Seven general contractors were asked to bid on this. All seven contractors did bid, and Kroll Construction was the lowest responsible bidder at $1,038,000. This project was identified and sourced through the Deferred Maintenance Fund.
Trustee Milliken?
All right, I don't know who was first.
These general contractors, how many of them have done work for us before?
AIMS, Kroll, two, three, four, five, actually.
Well, these are familiar faces to you.
Oh, yes. Yep.
Good. Thank you.
Who was first? Okay, Trustee DeVarty?
Again, this is in relation to the potential rehabilitation and redesign of the Student Center. Is there any reason we, this is over $1 million?
Yep.
Is this going to be like we invest this, do that? And then if we move ahead with the full Student Center rehab, that we're just going to rip this all out and redo it?
Yeah, if we do the other project, the bathrooms will not move. We, we're not moving bathrooms, so those bathrooms will stay right where they are. So they won't be affected. We had actually discussed this. So yeah, they would not be affected.
Trustee McKnight-Morton?
Oh, mine is not so detailed. I just want to know, is it possible to put like a chair or a bench in the bathroom downstairs or in the service area? So people can go in and maybe just take a, just a rest on it before?
Sure, I mean, yeah.
Could that be done? I mean, I don't know. I'm looking at the female bathrooms.
It could be done, but we, one consideration, just so that you're aware, but yes.
It's a consideration.
Anything could be done, sure. I appreciate that. You know, we just don't want students, you know, we have high schoolers here on campus. They love those chairs in the bathrooms.
That's true. Anyway, to seal them down to the floor.
I'm just saying, we'll try our best. Yes, we'll try our best.
I'm looking at workers and that type of thing. Okay, thank you.
Trustee Milstein?
So question in regards to, and I've asked this question before, the materials. The material line that I see across there varies quite widely. You know, we're expecting them to replace all the toilets, all the partitions, all the sinks, things of that nature. But I always wonder, like, does that mean that we're going to have the lesser quality? Is that how this is done? Because to see such a wide difference, you know, ranging from $384 to over $500,000 is a wide range there. And I understand labor, they can control that, but materials doesn't seem like that's something they can easily control.
Yeah, and one of the things that we do when we put out the bid, we put in specifications. Fixtures, sink fixtures. We specify certain brands like, you know, Chicago faucets. We want certain toilet man, certain stall partitions. So once they give us our bid, once we get it back, we sit down and do a big clarification meeting to make sure that what we're thinking is what they're bidding on. So we make sure that we do a big clarification meeting before we bring it to you.
Okay. So why the difference? Why is it so widely different between?
Markups. Yeah. Why the difference? Just depending on how much they mark it up.
Thank you.
So this could actually change come January?
I'm sorry?
This could change come January? No?
No, he just means in the bid. The difference between these columns.
All right, cool. Just checking. Anyone else? Thank you very much.
All right.
Good thing we have a month to think about the new business that we, businesses that were presented tonight to discuss. Any questions further that any of us have? McKnight-Morton, welcome to contact President Belaka, and she'll fill you in a little bit more if need be. I would like to entertain the motion to adjourn the monthly meeting. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Meeting is adjourned.